Good morning. Good morning, and welcome to the regular meeting of Council, City Council for Tuesday, December 12, 2023. Will the Clerk please take the rule call?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
I'm here.
Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Kraus will lead us in it, and Reverend Burgess, and remain standing for a moment of silence. Since you came up here, you have to say the pledge. Come on, Reverend.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as a law.
Please be seated. Thank you both. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda? Is there a second? Any discussion? Agenda is amended. Oh, all in favor, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Agenda is amended. The next order of business is proclamations, and I have a few from councilmembers to be read into, or to be presented. And we'll start with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess. Reverend Burgess, come forward, please.
I don't know what you're doing.
Now, you may know that some of our colleagues are leaving, retiring. I can't get them out of their seats, but they are leaving.
What are you doing? What are you?
We're doing proclamations. Come on.
Why are you doing this?
I can't read them both together. They're different. You are both so unique, believe me.
Oh, God, help me.
Come up here, Rev. Or do you want me to come down there?
I'm here.
Okay. Well, so I just want to say, when I first got here, there's people that taught me a lot of things. And somebody said to me, you know, they gave me a lot of advice when I first got here. Somebody said, make sure you work with everyone. That was Councilman Kraus. You have to have five people to do anything in the City Council. You're not an island. You have to vote with other people. Somebody else said to me, make sure you hire a Chief of Staff you can trust. And Tanya Payne said, you can't trust none of these people. So there was, I won't say her exact words, because they weren't so kind, but I will just say, there was a lot of advice people gave you. But Reverend Burgess has been giving me advice since I've been here, and so, and how to get things done. So Reverend, I just want to thank you for your time here on City Council, and know that you're going to continue doing amazing things in the community.
You have to read all this.
What do you mean, I don't have to read all this? Whereas Ricky Burgess assumed the office of Councilmember of District Nine in 2008, and secured his fourth and final term in 2019. His current term ends in January 2024. And whereas during his tenure, he passionately advocated for the rights of low and moderate income people by creating legislation that empowers the community to be a part of the government process. And whereas he has introduced legislation to support affordable housing in Pittsburgh, one such legislation would create the Homewood, East Hills, East Liberty, and Lincoln-Lemington-Belmore Protection Help Initiative, which called for the development of affordable housing protections of affordable housing protection strategy. And whereas Reverend Ricky Burgess has also been the pastor of Nazarene Baptist Church for over 30 years, and he has served as a professor of communications and at Community College of Allegheny County. And whereas Reverend Burgess is a member of the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, where he has worked to establish clean and safe affordable housing for residents. He is also an active board member in the Pittsburgh Pastoral Institute, Allegheny Union Baptist Association, and Homewood Community Ministries. And whereas Ricky Burgess graduated from La Salle University and earned a master's degree from Eastern Michigan University. And he also studied at Penn State University and the Pittsburgh Theological University. And whereas he and his wife Carlotta have been married for over 30 years, she deserves a proclamation, and together raised three sons, three amazing kids, I will say, and an amazing daughter. Three sons, Richard, John, and William, and their daughter Candace. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize our colleague, Councilmember Reverend Ricky Burgess, and thank him for his service to the City of Pittsburgh and its residents. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 12, 2023, to be Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. You've got to say something. You've got to say a few words, and then the members will say a few words.
General Douglas McArthur, the most decorated general in U.S. history, on his farewell address to the joint session of Congress said, "Old soldiers never die. They just fade away." I have been a voice of one crying in the wilderness, saying, "Make straight the way for our Lord." I want to thank the mayors that I have been fortunate enough to serve with, Luke Ravenstall, Bill Peduto, Ed Gany. I want to thank the Chief of Staffs. I want to thank all of the councilmembers, including Councilman O'Connor, who's with us, but Doug, if I start calling names, I'll forget somebody, right? But, you know, all of the members that I have served with. I want to thank all of the council staff. I want to thank all of the authority heads and all of the directors that have been my great fortune. It is interesting that people ask me, you know, wherever you're going to do, as if something has changed. Before I came to council, I preached and taught. While I was on council, I preached and taught. So pretty much when I leave council, I'll probably continue preaching and teaching. I think that's what I'll do. And to whoever asks me, I'll share what I know about the need to rebuild communities in an equitable, in an equitable way. But at the end of, I thought a little bit about this this morning, and my mind certainly goes back to Scripture. Paul said, "I'm about to be offered. The time of my departure is at hand. I have fought the good fight. I have finished my course. I have kept the faith. Henceforth, there is laid up for me a crown of righteousness, which the Lord, the righteous Judge, shall give to me on that day, but not to me only, but unto all them also, whose love is appearing." I will end with what Richard Nixon said. Richard Nixon paraphrased McArthur's quote. Richard Nixon says, "Old politicians usually die. They just don't fade away."
And not like this is going to be your eulogy, but we'll let the councilmember say a few nice things about you. Councilmembers, do you want us to say a few words?
Please don't do this.
Councilman Coghill, start, begin with you.
Well, Reverend Burgess, I just want to say, you know, we've not always seen eye to eye on everything, but through most of what we didn't see eye to eye on, we've never had a harsh word between each other. We've always respected each other. I appreciate what you do. Sometimes you're hard to keep up with. I think one week you threw down 10 pieces of legislation, and I was, couldn't remember which was which. But I appreciate your friendship. I appreciate your mentorship in many ways. You're a good man, and I wish you all the best in whatever you decide to do. So, thank.
Councilman Gross.
Councilman Burgess, I feel like we got off to extraordinarily rocky start 10 years ago. I mean, I don't think it could have been worse. And most of it was on the record. But we do agree, I think, on goals for the city, even if we often disagreed about the means. But I also think that it's part of our process, and it's an important part of our public and civic discourse, to have those disagreements, to hear the public, and to work through those problems. And that, I can say, we absolutely did. I appreciate it. And I'm so happy for you and all of the wonderful things that are happening in your family life as well. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you. So, Councilman, I don't even know where to begin. It's been such a ride, you know. You and I and Patrick coming in together at quite a turbulent time in the city, the challenges that we faced, you know, the mountains we climbed, and, you know, the things that we were asked to do, to write the finances of the city and to, you know, shepherd in a more responsible fiscal policy, you know, for the city, and all those kinds of things. Like you said, we've served through three administrations now, and, you know, Patrick has moved on, you know, working for the county, chairing the library board. It's been a journey. It's been, it's been a great journey. And, you know, it almost sounds cliches, and I don't mean it to be, but it is truly an honor. There are, of 300,000 people that call Pittsburgh their home, there are 11 people that are called to elective service at any given time in the city. And to be chosen as one of those 11 is an honor that we will carry with us the remainder of our lives. You know, when they write our eulogy, you will be the honorable Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, you know. And, you know, and so, I mean, we'll carry that with us for all time. But proud to serve with you. You and I have, we've wrestled a time or two, or three or four, but it's been a great journey, and I'm grateful and thankful that I had you to share it with. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lavelle?
Thank you. Rev, it's truly been a pleasure to serve with you, to both work alongside with you, as well as become your friend, I think, over the years. And so, I truly appreciate all the work that you've done, that we've done together. And in council, you have often spoke about the least of these, in working to improve their environments, to improve their communities, to improve where they live, where they stay. And I believe you've absolutely done that. You have left this city a better place than when, since you got here. The work you've done speaks for itself, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's transforming Lamor Choice, Stop the Violence, all that work is because you believe in these communities, and you wanted to help the least of these, and you've certainly done that. And if I know you well enough, although you're leaving this body, you will certainly continue to do that work, and I look forward to working with you in the future as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Reverend Burgess, you certainly have left a large and long legacy in your wake, and everything that Councilman Lavelle just said is true. You have worked to uplift your communities and have kept that front and center in your work over the time that I've known you, over the last 10 years. And I know that we all appreciate that, because it lifts up the city in turn. And I have also enjoyed getting to know you personally and professionally. I enjoyed having, you know, philosophical and theoretical conversations about the city, and about life, and about, you know, all that there is that is wrapped up in this very unique role. So, thank you for your mentorship, and thank you for your work, and I wish you nothing but the best in what I know is not truly going to be a retirement.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, so it's been a pleasure getting to know you over the past year. I appreciate your guidance. You know, when I call, you answer the phone, and that's something I appreciate more than I can tell you. And, you know, I'll say, what you've done in your district over these past years is really like trailblazing, right? In terms of, you know, you always say, I do, I know how to do development, I know how to do economic development. And it, and, I mean, I venture to say, you were the first here in Pittsburgh to really do that, to really say, you know what, we are going to transform the communities. And, you know, when you're the first one, it's not, it's not always going to be perfect. It's not going to be easy, right? But you sort of, you're like, but this is, and now, I mean, in my district, right, we're sort of embarking on the same thing. And having been able to see what you have done, you know, we can look at that, you know, what works, what we could improve, that type of thing. So, you know, I hope that over the coming four years, I can still continue to call and get advice, you know, when I'm wrangling with developers on my own end. And, yeah, so, good luck and all good things. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson's not here today. Reverend, thank you.
I'm online.
Oh, you are here? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, Councilman, do you want to say a few words?
I wouldn't miss this moment. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
And I wanted to, you can hear me?
Yes, please continue.
Okay, thank you. Reverend Burgess, I want to let you know that, you know, I came to council, you know, an interesting time with COVID, but, you know, just to remember some of those times where, you know, there would be a lot of online meetings and didn't really get to, you know, really didn't get to be in person as much. But we talked extensively throughout that time regardless. And the knowledge and the guidance that you've given me is, you know, I won't forget that, and I think it will really help me serve District One, you know, has helped me, and it will help me in future years. And you've been a partner, not only for CY, protecting workers, and also for more housing, but even in your own district, just like other members have said, it's just very commendable what you've done. And it goes unrecognized continually, which is ridiculous. And I think that you should be, I mean, I'm proud, I'm proud to be a member and to, you know, be on that side of the city and see what you've done, you know, for people, especially in your district. And I think that your legacy will live on, you know, for everything that you've done. And I love hearing the stories about how you become such the number-one champion for workers, especially, you know, in a time where different, you know, different, you know, workers needed, different, you know, whether it's janitors or security guards, they needed, you know, their wages increased, and you were right there to fight for them. So, you know, I think just that's emblematic of who you are. You want to make sure that people in the City of Pittsburgh are doing well, and I commend you for that. So, really looking forward to what you do from here. I know you're going to enjoy a lot of good time with your grandkids, and, you know, hoping I can get there someday too. So, just appreciate you and everything you do for Pittsburgh. Thanks.
Thank you. And Reverend, I'm going to just thank you for everything. And we're friends, so I'm sure we'll still continue to talk, and I'll learn, continue to learn from you. But I will say that it was, at first, I think with everybody, it's, you don't know who's your friend, who to trust, what to do. And you hear so many things when you're first elected. But I will say this, I learned that you know more about government than anybody I've ever met. You know more about city government. You know more about getting things done. And you've shared that information with others. You've never held back. You've never been vindictive, trying to do things to people that have done things to you. So, you've taught me a lot, in a lot of different ways, but it's the way you fight for your community. And I think the sad part is, a lot of times when we leave these seats, people aren't going to realize what we did until we're gone. And I think it's going to be the case, when you leave, people are going to realize how hard you fought to keep affordable housing in your, in your district, and to make sure that you fought for your residents, and lifted up their lives, not just that they could afford affordable housing, but that they would have a life where they can afford any housing they wanted. And so, I want to thank you for all that you've done. But mostly, I really want to thank you also for sharing your staff with us. You have one of the most knowledgeable staffs, probably the most knowledgeable staff here in the city. And there's amazing staff members here. But yours has the institutional knowledge as well. So, I want to thank you for sharing your staff with us, too, because they've helped us through a lot of things. We would not have been able to do the redistricting this year, I don't know if people realized, or last year, had it not been for Sean Carter in your office. So, I want to thank you for the team that you brought to the table. With that said, we're going to move on to our next proclamation. Time for Councilman Kraus. Thank you. So, when I first became Council President, I thought, how do you follow Bruce Kraus? He was here for six years, and an amazing president, never any kind of turmoil, never any kind of controversy. So far, we've had, since I've been Council President, we've had the COVID, we've had a pay raise debacle, we've had, we now have the DA looking into things, and there's just been one thing after another, I'm just going to say it, one thing after another. And there are challenging things to lead the council through, and there are challenging things to lead the city through. But with all that said, I want to thank you because you've really set the bar high and showed me how to do some things differently. Whenever I have a concern or question about some of the things going on in the city, or how to handle things, I contact you or Reverend Burgess, and you always, you always, you both guide me through a lot of stuff. So, I just want to thank you for all that you've done.
We talk all the time.
All the time. And he bakes a mean cheesecake. Whereas Councilman Bruce Kraus was first elected as a member of Pittsburgh City Council in 2007, and began serving on January 7, 2008. He was elected President of Council by his colleagues in January of 2014, and re-elected three consecutive sessions, ending January 2020. And I'm going to tell you, that is amazing that you even accepted. It's a really, it's a hard thing to do. And whereas, born and raised in the South Side, Bruce got involved in public office because his passion to help people. While Bruce was the first councilman who was gay, which is, I probably should say, first gay councilperson, he never wanted to be known as the gay councilman. He always, but he has been dedicated to fighting for equal rights and the well-being for all the citizens of the City of Pittsburgh. And during, and whereas during his tenure, Councilman Kraus has sponsored and supported legislation regarding the safety and well-being of his constituents, such as the Responsible Hospitality Institute's Social City Plan and the City's Social Host Ordinance. Bruce also supported legislation requiring proper reporting of lost and stolen handguns. And whereas, committed to the revival of the historic and traditional beauty of many Pittsburgh neighborhoods, he was instrumental in reopening the South Side Market House. He also assisted in securing a $4 million renovation of the Carson Street branch of the Carnegie Library, and was instrumental in saving and renovating the Knoxville and Carrick branches of the Carnegie Library. In addition, he secured space for a Carnegie pop-up library in Allentown. And whereas, Councilman Bruce Kraus is a fierce defender of four-legged residents, which I'm trying to tame him down a little bit, of four-legged residents, as well as sponsoring legislation for the humane treatment of animals, banning bull hooks and red-eared sliders, and raising thousands of animals, animals for adoption, and raising thousands of dollars for animals for adoption. He also helped the Riverfront Off-Leash Exercise Area Project. And whereas Bruce serves on the boards of the Brochier Association, the Carnegie Library, Children's Sickle Cell Foundation, and the Oakland Business Improvement District, and is on the advisory board to Shepherd Wellness. He has also served on boards of Carnegie Mellon, the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust, and the Institute for Research and Education and Training in Addictions. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Councilman Bruce Kraus and thank him for his service to the City of Pittsburgh and its residents. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 12, 2023, to be Councilman Bruce Kraus Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved.
I love you, love you, love you. I'm not sure where to begin. At a time like this, it's easy to have words fail you. The, the charge that, that we are given when we come as elected officials of the city is to first and always act in the best interest of the peoples that we represent. And my experience over the 16 years that I've, I've been a member of this esteemed body, I have had the privilege to work with countless people that have held these seats, that have, that have fulfilled that commitment. Truly one of the most rewarding, uplifting, and enriching experiences has been the, the day-to-day interaction of member to member, especially when the hall was, the hallway was plentiful, pre-COVID, when every minute of every day we spent in each other's company, banging it out, hashing it out, and trying to figure it out, to, you know, the best we can, you know, to serve the people of Pittsburgh in their highest and best order. And I believe we've accomplished that. Yes, we've had some failures, no question about it. But I believe the majority of the steps that we took were truly in the best interests of our constituents, and I'm proud to say, the work we've done has had meaning. So, I leave, you know, I leave this city in good hands. I have a tremendous respect for you, as you sit here to carry on the work of the people, and have full faith and confidence. Kahari Mosley, Bob Sharlin joined the council. There's a new and fresh perspective, you know. We, I like to say, we can't hold these positions forever, that we have a duty and an obligation to leave, so that we can make way for new, fresh approaches and ideas, and for, to provide someone else the opportunity to sit in this seat and to govern. And so, I leave by saying I am just extremely proud of you, and I am, I call you not only my colleagues, but my friends. And we leave the city, Reverend Burgess and I leave the city in good hands. And to quote former Bill, former Mayor Bill Peduto, I'd like to leave you with this charge, and that was to say, "Do great things." Thank you. Thanks, Madam President.
And if counsel indulge me for a minute, I think, is Controller O'Connor still here? Yeah. Do you want to come up here, say a few words? Well, we're not going to let you say "public comma," because that's three minutes. We're giving you one.
Thank you. That's all I need. No, I just, I came over, and my staff, Bill, obviously, worked with you both for so many years, just wanted to come over and thank you. I want to start with, with Rev. Coming here day one, you taught me as a freshman councilman what it's like to get legislation done, what it's like to work with colleagues, and a vision that you had for the future of the city. And I still remember the first meeting, and I told you this when we had lunch a couple weeks ago, if you could go back and copyright "City for All, County for All," you'd be a multimillionaire. Because it was Reverend that put up a map that showed us where equity was in this city. And it was a very powerful meeting. But you were the one, and you don't get enough credit for it, that started those conversations. And you deserve to be proud of what you were able to accomplish here. I consider you a mentor all the way through. We've always talked. I think you've done an incredible job. Now you get grandkids, so you can enjoy yourself a little bit. But on behalf of all the other alumnis, because you and I were the central contingency here, congratulations on a great career. And, you know, I still look forward to working with you and your next journey. So, now on to my work husband. Councilman Kraus, you know, I'm sending you old texts that we used to throughout the meeting. We can't show those to the public, but those were pretty funny. But you always looked at us as a body. And I remember even when we would fight about this piece of legislation or that piece of legislation, you always said, what does the body look like? Because we represent all of Pittsburgh. And I think you, as President, always, as Council President, said, you always looked at that. And I think that's what made you a very effective council president. And, you know, I'm honored to be standing here saying goodbye, because you actually were the one that officiated my wedding. So, I owe you a lot. I don't want to rat anybody out, but one of you two retiring did steal a manger scene a couple of years ago. Now that we're in the holiday season, I'll allow the public to figure out who might have been. But I just really want to thank both of you. You are mentors to me. And Bruce, I actually, one last thing, my first month or so here, you forced me to go buy suits, because all my clothes were from the Kids Gap. And I now finally have, like, decent wear, so I want to thank you for, for setting that up for me. But again, it's an honor to be here, Council President. Thank you very much for a couple minutes, but we are all going to miss you too. to miss you too very, very much. Thank you.
We have our Madam Clerk wants to say a few words. She's been here the longest, but there we go.
Councilman Burgess and Councilman Kraus, it has been an absolute pleasure to work alongside, alongside you and work with you. I wish you peace. I wish you happiness. I wish you joy on this next chapter. So on behalf of myself and the city clerk's office, congratulations, and we will miss you.
We'll miss you.
Thank you. Councilman, or elect, Councilman-elect Bob Charlin, do you want to say a few words since you're here?
Boy, you're that eager to get in there, huh?
And thank you to those waiting for public comment while we indulging us while we could do this.
So Councilman Kraus, you know, it's been an honor to serve with you and to learn from you. Thank you for the trust you've given me in, in, you know, helping me and guiding me to this seat. There's, there's big shoes to fill. There's big hair to fill.
You've got the hair, Bobby.
But, you know, but it, it truly has been an honor and to see kind of the way, as a, as a staffer, sometimes you're on the floor and you want to boil the ocean and you want to do great things. But understanding that, you know, there's only this, this little bit that's really in our control, and we need to do the best job with that little bit. And making sure that, that, you know, we're, we're thinking about the future of the city and not just the issue that's in the news and, you know, the hot topic, but we're actually thinking about, how does this affect the city for 100 years? How does this, how does this affect all of the city and not just a small class of people that are on social media? And, and kind of having that larger perspective and that, that larger lens, something that, you know, I really appreciate, something that has helped me grow over the years and as I'm running, it's something I want to continue to take with me. So thank you so much for that. And you'll always be, no, it's my turn. You'll always be, you know, you'll always be someone that I can, I can call on for, for advice. And, you know, you've already, stop. But, you know, and you've already-
I said, but don't.
You've already, you know, filled that role for a lot, in a lot of ways. So I really appreciate that. And, and, you know, that will continue for, for a long time here.
I have to say, I am terribly proud of you. And I know you, you will do great things. And you will, you will create your own legacy in your own time. And you have every skillset you need to be a member of this body and to serve this city well. And again, I'm terribly proud of you and wish you nothing but the very best.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And will members start with Reverend Burgess?
In the coming days, I will celebrate 39 years of marriage. During those times, I have loved my wife. I have not spoken to my wife.
And she thanks you for that? Oh, sorry.
I've ate dinner with my wife. And I've realized that despite our, our relationship, there's a, there's a soulfulness, a sincerity, and a godliness about my wife that I can't help but love. And to be honest with you, the relationship that Bruce and I have, no one knows except the two of us, right? We have spoke to each other. We have not spoke to each other. We have eaten together. We have argued together. I'm not wrong. So we have had that sort of intimate friendship relationship. But I will say two things. One is, like my wife, there is a spiritualness and a soulfulness about you that I love and admire. Two, we as humans have this two parts, right? We have this, this, you know, earthly, human part, and then we have this spiritual divine part. And I think there are sometimes my human part overshadows my divinity. But I really cannot take a time, in all the years I've known you, that I can say that about you. You have always let the divinity part of you overshadow the earthly part of you. You are a godly man. You're a good man. And you'll always be my friend. I think we'll always argue, but that's, I think, the nature of our friendship, right? And I think that, you know, we're old lions. And every now and then, we probably will still roar.
Thank you.
Councilman Kalkiel.
Okay. Well, Councilman Kraus, first of all, it's been a pleasure to really get to know you. And even though I knew you before I came on to council, I remember meeting with you, McDonald's on Brownsville Road. You were running for your second term as president, and we talked things out. And, you know, I was proud. My very first vote on council was for you. So I never, never doubted that vote. I think you did a super job as president. And, you know, you listened to me and we got things done. And I will tell you, it's not lost on me when we talk about that Public Works Division that we're still waiting for. But, but it's not lost on, on me that had I not had you in my corner when we went to then-Mayor Peduto, that that would not have happened. And, and we also had Councilwoman Kelsmith with us. So, so I want to thank you for that. And I hope you'll be at that ribbon cutting-
Oh, hell yeah.
When and if it comes. And, you know, it's going to be a great day. And it's great for, for the district. So again, thank you for, not only that, but other things that I have lobbied for and with your help as a president, I had gotten done. So, so again, good luck in your private sector. I know you're going back into the private sector. I will be a customer, I will tell you, okay? Everything you make sounds delicious to me. I've seen the menu. And I need to make an order already. Nobody expects me to bring a high-class pie to, to things, but I'm going to surprise them this year. And I also want to thank you for, you know, Bobby Charlin was working for me at the time as a part-timer and for recognizing his talent. And when you decided to hire him, you didn't just make the offer. You came to me and you said, would I mind? And I said, not only would I mind, I would be grateful as well. So, so not only hiring him away from me, but putting him in the position to be a city, our next colleague here on council, I think was very wise of you, you know, and for the many, many things that you've been helpful. I consider you more than a colleague. I consider you a friend. So thank you. I admire the work you've done. I look forward to seeing what you do and keeping in contact with you in the private sector. So, yeah, appreciate you.
Madam President, if I may add, I've watched Anthony grow for, in the second, now second, halfway through a second term now on the, on the body, six years. And it's been, you've made me very proud many, many times to see where you came in and how you consistently and very steadily grew, understanding the responsibilities that you have to the body and to the city, and to see you to be the member of council that you are today.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Lavelle.
Thank you. Sorry. It's truly been a pleasure to serve along with you, Bruce. I think two things that I'll take away is, one, your consistent message that, and I hope I don't mess this up, we don't have the, the lean, it's not the leniency, but we don't have the-
Luxury.
The luxury of maybe. But that, when we serve in this body, we have to make very hard and fast decisions. And you've always been very clear about that. And I appreciate that sort of lesson, right? Because it also follows your fiscal wall stall perspective that you've had over the years in ensuring that we don't do things that take us back to Act 47 days. And I truly appreciate that, along with your perspective of, yes, we're elected by districts, but we're here to serve the entire city. And we always have to keep that perspective in mind. And so those are, but few of the lessons that I will take from the time, the time that I've spent with you. So thank you. It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, I've known you since before I was elected to this body. And I, one of my first memories of really getting to know you as a, you know, as an almost or maybe colleague was in my special, my first special election, you were there for me. I mean, you were in ways that I, I didn't fully expect or appreciate was needed. But, you know, heading into Election Day, sending me texts like, just enjoy this moment, like it was a wedding day or something. Like, just enjoy this moment. There's nothing like the first time you run for office. And really being there for me as a friend is, you know, it was really meaningful. I have appreciated seeing you live your mission, live your values through this work on the issues you care about. And there, there are many issues you care about, and you have made an impact on every single one of them. They were listed already. I won't go through all of them. And we share some of those same issue interests. But even more than that, as others have alluded to, you are not someone who seeks conflict or seeks to divide. You always, if not consensus, you're always working to bring people together. And I think that's what made you such an effective president of council and such an effective council member, where you're one of nine. And you need to be able to bring people together to get anything accomplished. So we'll certainly miss you on this hallway. I will miss you. I will certainly be calling on your advice if you're willing to pick up the phone in the future. And I know that we'll still keep in touch. And I'll be patronizing your business as well.
Can I add one thing? The, I'll never forget, my first election, I was out there and I was banging doors. And who called me? But Tanya Payne. And it just blew me away that a member of council was calling me to say, good luck. This is your moment. Enjoy it. You'll never have another one like it. And that, it made such an indelible mark on me that it was very important for me to share that. And so when I did those things with you, it was a way to pass it on, just, you know, to pass it on. And so I hope you well as well, too. Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah. So it, it has been, I'm, I feel very lucky to have had this year of overlap and be able to, have been able to serve together. And I, you know, I really appreciate your guidance. Also, your staff has been wonderful, helping my staff and myself, you know, Bob Charlin, I've, you know, an enormous amount of help. I think one thing that I really admire in you is, you know, you, you say what you think, right? You do. You say what you think, whether or not it's the, the popular thing to say or the thing that everyone else at the table, you know, you, you are strong in your convictions. And, you know, when it comes to, and the thing is, is yes, we're a legislative body, and yes, we serve our, our residents. But, you know, as you always say, there's, you know, there's 11 electeds, you know, you're, you're in this very unique position, just because, you know, you have the bully pulpit to advocate for the things that you think are important. Even if it's not something we have control over as a body, you know, we have our voices here on council. And you, and you are very, you know, whether that be LGBTQIA, animal rights, all these kinds of things. You're very outspoken and strong in supporting those causes. And, and I think that's really admirable. And, 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 you know, it can be a hard jobs many times, and constituents can be mean, as can the public at large. But at least in my experience so far in this year, you, you always seem to have a sense of humor. You know, there was a funny story you told me and I, you know, my, my kids, I won't, I won't repeat the story here, but to this day, my kids say, tell us the Bruce story. Tell us the Bruce story. So, you know, I love that you keep a sense of humor about, about that type of thing. And, you know, serving the public is hard. And you've done a really fantastic job. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President.
Are you going to start by saying I'm your favorite?
Are those retirement glasses?
They're new, yes.
Okay. I like them.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I noticed, you know. I always notice how your tie's puffed out, too. So I was always wondering about that. But to get to it, you know, I actually, I think it was when I was running, you know, when I got in office, maybe it was right around time, a lot of us had these stories. You also had a lot of these expressions, you know, these phrases and sayings. And I tried to repeat them back to people, and they didn't know what I was talking about at all. But when you say it, it makes complete sense. But no, seriously, like, you do have a lot of wisdom that you've carried on. And there's one moment that I want to bring up, which was right when I got in office, where we disagreed. And there were further disagreements. In that time, I think it was, it was a good time, at least for me, I can say. Because I can look back that, back on that and say that, you know, without getting specifics, I think you and I would only know what we're talking about here. But you were right. And-
And we have grown.
Well, no, no, I want to say you, you were right. You were right in those moments back then. And it took me some time to realize that. But you knew that.
Corey went through that, too.
And, 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 you know, I would say that, this is probably something my parents want me to tell them, but anyway, you know, saying that they're right after some of years. But I just want to say that I think even still now, where we disagree on things, I think you'll be wrong on some of them.
Yeah.
But, but just in general, though, the fact that you have conviction and that you are here for reasons that are important to you, and that you, you know, you carry yourself in a way where you try to legislate, but also give the best advice the best way you know how to. And sometimes that comes with a hard road, which I appreciate. And I think that's also, you know, good leadership as well. So fortunately, I couldn't be here for when you were council president. I'm sure that was a hoot. You know, I hear you had to catch a couple of gavels.
Yeah.
I can say, I can say that, right?
I took one for the team on that day.
But, but no, I wanted to thank you for your service. And, and I wish you all the best in, in your, your future retirement.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for serving.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, thank you for your friendship, your leadership, for all that you've done for the city. We are going to have a reception after. If people would like to join us, everybody's welcome to come back to celebrate Reverend and Councilman Kraus. And I have just so much to say about all that you and Reverend have done for the city and for us personally. And I'm trying to forget it all. But no, just kidding, just kidding. But I will say that you've done so many great things. And teaching me to build, you know, a relationship with council members and how to work with people was really one of the best advices, piece of advice that I had gotten since I've been here, other than Tanya's. But I will say, thank you for, for showing me how to build a consensus and how to work with people and, and to do the things that need to be done to make sure my district and the city of Pittsburgh in general benefits from those relationships. But, you know, there's one thing, everybody keeps saying how you're always just a phone call away. And you are, except for I don't know how you're going to get those phone calls because I'm the one who always returns your phone to you.
Yeah, I know.
You forgot it up here. So with that said, I will just say you are always a phone call away. And if you want to get in touch with Councilman Kraus down the road, he's starting, can I say?
No.
A mean bakery business.
Yeah.
And he's gonna, he's, he has some really great things that he can provide. I'm sorry.
If I may add this, Madam President, you know, most everyone knows, I've spoken about it many times, that I'm actively in recovery 35 years and, and follow a 12-step program. And one of the teachings of the 12-step program is principles before personalities. And that, that we always focus, I, I hope that as, you know, we work together collectively and cooperatively as a team. We're not combatants. We're comrades, right? We're, we're, we're a unit. And that we focus on, on principles and not personalities. We can set those aside and focus on the work that we're here to do. And I say this to Bob all the time, and I've said it to members numerous times, it's all about relationships, right? It's the relationships that we build. We can put aside our personalities and our difference. We can build our, our relationships with one another and focus on the work at hand and get it done.
Thank you. And I appreciate everything that you've done and worked. And I know that you're a phone call away, helping all of us, but mostly your passion for the city. But I will say, you also had a great time, six years as council president. I never realized what that entailed until I got here. And when you have to shut your mouth because you're speaking for everyone, and you really want to say a couple of other things, it's really challenging. But you've always put the body in the best interest of the body first. And the strength of council, you made me understand the importance of council not giving up our strength and our power to anyone. And so for that, I want to thank you for all the things- all the things that you've done. And the importance, you and Reverend both taught us this, the importance of members sticking together and doing things for this, for the city as a whole. But making sure that we understood our role is part of checks and balances. So I just want to make sure, I thank you for all that and all that you've done. And I'll see you in the back, and we'll talk a little bit more. We have some gifts for you guys. I want to thank you, thank you both for your service to the city, incredible service to the city of Pittsburgh.
If I just could add one last thing, Madam President, and I promise I'll stop. I would be remiss in not recognizing the support of staff through the 16 years. And there have been many that have come. But the work that we do is absolutely impossible to do without the staff that we have to support us. And you've said this many times, and I've taken it to heart, I've had some of the best staff this floor has ever seen over the years. And, and I want to offer my most sincere thanks to everyone that has served in that capacity in the 16 years I've been here, because I could not have done it without them.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And with that said, we're going to move on to the proclamations to be read.
Oi.
We're done with the presented ones. Can we have Madam Clark read the procs to be read into the record?
Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, December 16th, 2023, to be Eagle Scout Donald Z. Reed the Third Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Your motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Next, Madam Clark.
Council President Smith also presents, be it further resolved, that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, December 16th, 2023, to be Eagle Scout Cameron Mitchell Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Your motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Next.
Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, December 16th, 2023, to be Eagle Scout Kyreek Mitchell Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Your motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. And the next one?
Council President Smith also presents, be it further resolved, that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, December 16th, 2023, to be Eagle Scout Rafael Diaz Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Your motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I just want to say, those are four amazing men coming out of Sheridan. Next one, Madam Clark.
And finally, Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, December 17th, 2023, to be Ruth Jacqueline School Lundino Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Your motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. And our next order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bells Hoover, Tokyo, Japan. I'm Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. From the 21 primary disciplines, 21 meetings comprise global and my approach to global intelligence, which will be republished coming up in March 2024. A note for Asian American Pittsburghers. The Asian American Legal Defense and Education Fund can be reached at 212-966-5932 or info@aaldef.org. A concern of council and the Global Intelligence Society is housing, evident with the meeting before the council meeting, very informative to me. Using the meaning of global as worldwide, I draw on information and intelligence resources to help solve local housing problems. I have done this for the last five years with very little response from this council. Going into Squirrel Hill, past CMU on Forbes on the left, suppose I own a house. I want to demolish my house, one of those old stone buildings. I want to develop my property to build a duplex. In the city of Pittsburgh, 300,000 population, the government housing bureaucracy has two heads, what I consider to be a TRX Urban Redevelopment Authority, URA head, and a Housing Authority, HAT-Rex head. In Tokyo, 13 million people, the government housing, Yuchini, Buman, has one dragon head. In Pittsburgh, countering the URA-HAT-Rex Hydra will devour much coffee every day for two months, more than $200 in fees, and three layers of, I consider to be, condescending office help. In Tokyo, there is, there is one. There is one staff and one office, $100 in fees equivalent, and a little bit of green tea. In downtown Tokyo, it's not unusual to get a two-bedroom, living room, bath, kitchen, a patio, an apartment for $1,000 a month. But just imagine that on Smithfield Street or Grant Street in the city of Pittsburgh. It's almost unimaginable. People are much more likely to move out of Pittsburgh than into Pittsburgh, but the opposite is true for Tokyo. Now, what is the key to this? The key is development. Tokyo has relentlessly pursued development. And I suggest very strongly that that is the solution to the problem of housing in this city, a major part of it at least.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Joe Demming.
Morning, everyone. My name's Joe Demming. I'm the executive director of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council and a Perry Hill Top resident. Just want to thank you guys for all the work that you do, for creating a food justice fund, for your creating a composting pilot program that the city has been administering over the past year. And as we look to the city budget and we look at what we're investing in, I wanted to encourage you to support the resolution that Councilwoman Gross introduced that would expand upon that composting work in the city of Pittsburgh. It's Resolution 2300. Pittsburgh Food Policy Council is a membership organization with over 80 members and countless neighborhood residents. And I'm supporting this because we need more solutions that will help not only our farmers, you know, support their crops, but also mitigate climate change. While climate change may not always seem ever-present and urgent, on a personal level, we know that we need to act now, not only for ourselves and our community, but for our children. There aren't environmental issues and people issues. They're all people issues. If we have a healthy environment, that determines whether we're going to be healthy, whether we're going to live long and thrive, or whether we're going to get sick and die quicker. We know that we're already feeling the impact in Pittsburgh, landslides, floods, extreme temperatures. We know that the most vulnerable are hit the hardest by the decisions and the resources that are used by those with more power and money. Wealthier people, wealthier communities drive cars, fly more, eat more meat, use more water, have more waste. Yet our lowest-income neighbors, who are frequently living closest to the rivers, are the ones impacted. Our homeless neighbors are the ones impacted by the cold, and our kids cannot go to school when it's too hot. So it's critical we make this resolution today that we invest in becoming a more green city, that we invest in composting. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, for your leadership, and thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen?
Naomi Mullen.
She's online, but...
Not shady deals in Bon Air. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says, "The government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we, the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Bon Air. That is not advisable. The Public School Board of Education in Pittsburgh has zero regard for the rights of the property owners, taxpayers, citizens, and voters in the Bon Air community. We do not consent to the detrimental school building remaining in our community. We do want a green space to replace the building and improve the location. This is the least that can be done to repair the loss that has occurred. The public servants of the school board shall work with the community to the best of their ability. It was fraudulent to claim that the community approved apartments. The school board has proven itself as detrimental. Will you be part of the solution? A first responder memorial green space is the solution and partial reparations for the injuries we have endured. Mayor Ganey showed up at our Bon Air Town Hall meeting. He saw that there was strong opposition to apartments at the long-closed Bon Air school. Councilman Cobhill was so convinced of the opposition to apartments that the planned virtual meeting was canceled. Had the residents known the virtual meeting would not occur, there would have been even more opponents in attendance. Former mayor Kuduto appointed a board to recommend that the school not be torn down. What gives anyone the right to usurp the will of residents who have quality of life and property value to defend? Now we have self-proclaimed friends of the mayor and others being told to pursue the purchase of the building. Clearly harassment on top of infliction of emotional distress and block busting is occurring. Are there deals for friends being offered? Are there potentially kickbacks being set up? Bon Air school buildings have sat unused for 20 years. It has deteriorated due to roof and mortar damage. The ceilings throughout have fallen. Lead paint chips. Election poll workers sit in the building a whole day twice a year. Exposure to lead dust and asbestos is hazardous to health. Or did I miss the memo that lead and asbestos is now considered safe? Numerous windows have been broken and tacks inside the building are due to use, breaking in and vandalizing it. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Barancas, Baranikas? If I said your name wrong, please correct me when you get to the podium.
You were close. Sarah Baranskas.
Baranskas.
All right. Hi, I'm a City of Pittsburgh resident, District 9, and I care about environmental sustainability and climate change. We know that compost is a fairly accessible step that individuals can take to make a really big impact. Organic waste is about one-third of household waste produced, and waste removal is already a fundamental city service. Even though it requires an upfront investment, providing additional options for waste removal that allow residents as individuals and the city as a whole to lessen our impact on climate change seems like a no-brainer. I also serve as staff with the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, and I want to thank Councilwoman Gross and her staff for leadership on this topic and discussion with community residents. I also want to thank and acknowledge our partners at the Pennsylvania Resources Council, Passe Sustainable Agriculture, Grow Pittsburgh, and the Department of City Planning, who demonstrated a lot of really great community engagement on this topic and community education. We're asking you to support Resolution 2023 2300, amending Pittsburgh's ARPA funds and allocating $100,000 to compost planning and implementation. Investments in compost also align with the recommendations in our Greater Pittsburgh Food Action Plan, which was a two-year planning process that engaged over 700 community residents. The recommendations and strategies included municipal waste audits, central drop-off locations, and exploring the feasibility of municipal compost programs. The resolution also aligns with the goals shared in our Community Compost Subcommittee, which convenes monthly, and recently hosted a feedback session with members of the City of Pittsburgh Compost Pilot. We just confirmed that city residents overwhelmingly would like a household pickup compost option and feel that current services for yard waste and composting of food at the household level is inadequate. Lastly, I just wanted to share a few of the comments from folks within our network who signed on to a support letter for this resolution. One is composting is an immediate way to drastically impact our world. Please move to make Pittsburgh a truly green city by creating ways and/or requiring composting in our communities. Another is, thank you for doing this important work. We need to see more food recycling services in Pittsburgh. Another, I participated in the Community Composting Pilot and loved it. Composting made a huge, all caps, difference with the amount of waste that was put out for trash collection. I'd love to continue, but it's not financially feasible for me to do so at this time. Any help to reduce the cost from the city would really benefit people like me who want to use these programs and need a little assistance. Another, other cities have compost pickup. This seems more equitable since requiring individuals to pay for it themselves is a regressive tax. And then lastly, please help advance community-scale composting. We shouldn't be sending food or yard waste to landfills to generate methane when we can instead create healthy soils and increase resilience to climate change. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Callie DeSabato. I live in Pittsburgh's North Side, Bobby Wilson, District 1. I participated in the city's compost pilot program over the summer. Shout out to Shady Side Worms, which has a great pickup service, and I've been getting compost returns and soil returns, which is awesome. I am also one of 10,000 Pennsylvania teachers who chose to leave the classroom last year. I loved teaching middle schoolers because they are curious and insightful and silly and terrifying and weird and serious and passionate. They pay attention to what is happening in the world, and you better believe that they have strong feelings about everything. In the spring, my students read Clifi novels. Clifi is a play on the science fiction abbreviation. It is an emerging genre in which climate plays a major role. I will briefly summarize ideas that emerged in every single peer-to-peer discussion, regardless of students' diverse political backgrounds. Climate change is real. It's human-caused, and it's a serious problem. This is so obvious. Kids know what we should do, but we are kids. Adults have the power to make changes, but they are failing us. For our young people, legislating with climate care in mind is an obvious necessity. I am here as an adult, speaking to adults who have power to make changes at the local level. As you may already know, composting has a range of environmental benefits, including reducing what we put into landfills, which is always good, but also the methane emissions from our food scraps and yard waste sitting in landfills creates about 20 times the CO2 emissions that composting would produce. Compost improves soil quality, which has a wide range of impact beyond making our gardens more beautiful and bountiful. These benefits include soil's ability to store carbon, the recycling of nutrients back into the soil, decreased reliance on chemical pesticides and fertilizers, and even a community's climate resilience with regard to soil erosion or water absorption and managing runoff during storms, all of which impacts Pittsburgh. In short, a move to fund and expansion of composting at the local level is a commitment to our environmental future and to the sustainability of our region. It is one of many small but mighty steps that we, the adults who are currently empowered by time, can take to improve our region's climate footprint and to meet our city's sustainability goals, Zero Waste by 2030. I urge you all in the council to support Resolution 2023 2300, amending Pittsburgh's Action Rescue Plan Fund Act and allocating $100,000 towards composting initiatives in our city. Thank you in particular to Councilwoman Gross for your leadership here, and thank you all.
Thank you. Zachary Delaney is our next registered speaker. Zachary Delaney is our next registered speaker.
My name is Zachary Delaney. I live in Council District 9, and I work with the Pennsylvania Resources Council, a statewide environmental nonprofit with a particular focus on the responsible management of our waste as a strategy to be a better steward of our natural world. I also want to express my support for the resolution introduced by Councilperson Gross to allocate the funding toward compost planning and implementation. You've had a couple of folks speaking here today, and I dramatically agree with everything that has been said. And one of the only things that I really have to add to what's been already spoken is that we have a lot of momentum right now. We've had two years of application of funding from the USDA to implement the Residential Composting Pilot Program, to conduct community-engaged sessions and produce educational materials that have reached hundreds of residents. And we had around 1,000 residents total interested in the composting pilot broadly. We were able to implement at-home composting solutions, subsidize for residents, including permanent yard composting bins and systems that people get to keep... permanent yard composting bins and systems that people get to keep forever, as well as subsidizing the home pickups as previously described. This, right now, is one of the best possible moments to just continue expanding the opportunities for home composting, opportunities for businesses, residents, and building more robust community gardens and creating opportunities for centralized drop-off locations. The really important accessible networks that advance composting are beneficial in many ways, as has been described, for air quality, restoring nutrients, and overall just reducing the amount of waste we send to the landfills. The great organizations like the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, Passa Sustainable Agriculture, and a large number of other ones, as well as the really great work done by the city, especially in city planning, has created, really, just like I said, a great opportunity and lots of momentum around composting and organic waste diversion. And so I appreciate greatly the energy that's been put in by the councilperson towards more robust and sustainable food systems, and I highly support the resolution to continue funding and supporting this great work. Thank you.
My name is Maren Cook. I live in Squirrel Hill. I'm a planetary scientist by training, so I have a pretty deep understanding of how geology, biology, and the atmosphere work together. These days, I'm doing mostly environmental education and activism, though, because we are in a crisis, multiple crises, and that feels more important to me. I'm also a lifelong composter, and I currently compost on my little city property. However, I know that not everyone has the ability to do that. No land, no space, no time. Putting food waste and yard waste into the trash may seem convenient, but it's a terrible idea. Because landfills need to be big, and nobody wants one in their backyard, landfills tend to be pretty far out of the city, so the cost and carbon emissions of hauling material are substantial. Once buried in a landfill, organic material is cut off from oxygen and decomposes anaerobically. This produces methane, a far more potent greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide, over 80 times as much warming per molecule, along with other more stinky gases. Composting above ground is far less noxious and more productive, and helps with both mitigation of and adaptation to climate change. Some of the carbon escapes as carbon dioxide, but a lot remains in the material itself to be trapped in the soil where it is sequestered for the long term, while increasing soil fertility, biodiversity, and water retention. This, in turn, helps provide resilience to droughts, flooding, and landslides, all significant here in Pittsburgh. Anaerobic decomposition can also be done inside biodigestors right in neighborhoods. It does produce methane, which is captured to use as fuel instead of releasing to the atmosphere. Different models might work better for different neighborhoods, so I thank the city and the Pennsylvania Resources Council and other groups for doing the pilot program this year. As for economics, the city spends millions of dollars each year in refuse collection, expenses that include salaries, benefits, workers' comp, trucks, fuel, the other things I'm not even mentioning. Over a quarter of that material is food and yard waste, and so a good chunk of that money could be much better spent. There will be some costs associated with starting up a new system, but ultimately composting is far less expensive, especially when we include currently externalized costs like climate emissions and the public health hazards associated with ever bigger and more numerous landfills. We need systems in place so that everyone can compost. Please help advance community-scale composting by supporting Resolution 2023-2300, proposed by Councilmember Deb Gross. We shouldn't be sending food or yard waste to landfills to generate methane when we can instead create healthy soils, grow more food locally, and increase resilience to climate change. Quite a lot of other cities have municipal composting programs. Pittsburgh should get on board. Crafting a municipal budget is a great opportunity to enable new initiatives. Composting should be on that list. Thank you.
Thank you. That is last, our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record.
Yes, good morning. I'm Georgia Petropolis, the CEO of the Oakland Business Improvement District. Good morning, Council. Good morning to the public here. So typically, you would see me here, I don't know, advocating for asking you for support for everything related to Oakland, right? Whether it was an Oakland plan, whether it was changing zoning, whether it was the renewal of the Business Improvement District legislation. But I'm actually here this morning to thank you all for your proclamations, and I'm also here to thank our councilmen. So congratulations and thank you, Councilman Burgess, because it took all nine of our councilmembers every time to renew the legislation of the bid, so I want to thank you for that. And that's on behalf of the Obid Board of Directors, our staff, our community, and our stakeholders. I'm also here in particular to thank our Board of Director, our partner, our friend, our advocate, Councilwoman Kraus. Thank you for everything. You both deserved what you got. I've sat through quite a few of the conversations and dialogues that you both were referring to, but what we see here in the chambers is one, and what really happens every day and every week in our communities is another, and we know that. And in our case, we were very actively engaged with Councilwoman Kraus, whether it was on Zoom, whether it was in public, whether it was one-on-one. You've done so much. You should all walk through, drive through, hang out in Oakland, and you'll see the impact that Councilwoman Kraus has had. So thank you. Thank you to your staff. We love you. Good luck. And yes, he bakes a mean cheesecake. Happy holidays.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Good morning.
Hi, I'm Reverend Derek Tynes. I wanted to come and join the symphony of thanks and applause to Councilman Burgess and Councilman Kraus. I am a co-chair. I'm a resident a couple blocks away and served in many capacities in the city, and just wanted to come and just say thank you openly to you first, Councilman Burgess, for being who you are. You have been many things, and you've been a blessing to our city and to our neighborhoods, and you've joined Councilman Dwayne Dartkins and so many others from that area that did so much in that area, so I'm thanking you for that. And we honor you for your life and for your work and for your misunderstanding, because people have misunderstood you and your work, but you've got it done, so I applaud you. And then to Councilman Kraus, as a co-chair of the LGBT Commission, we want to make sure that we applaud you for not just serving us, but serving everyone. And I love your statement about not just being a gay councilman, but I'm a councilman for everyone, and I think you have indeed just demonstrated that and have shown genuineness and authenticity in your work. And I wanted to come and applaud you and just show up and say thank you out loud. Bless you.
Thank you. Any further speakers?
Hi, my name is Allison McAttee, and I live in District Nine in Garfield. I just want to echo and amplify everyone else's request to support the composting initiative and the expansion of that funding, because it is a food justice issue, and as the city allocates funding for food justice issues and projects, that it also acknowledges the amount of waste that would not only be diverted from the landfill, but also the amount of nutrient-rich foods that we would be able to produce with the compost program. This is the time where our food is the least nutrient-rich that it's ever been, and obesity and a lot of other health issues continue to plague our communities. And so this would be a way that we would be able to actively, every day, build a practice of not only taking care of our planet, but also taking care of ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Good morning.
Good morning, Council. My name is Hank Commodore, and I have a program, says Help the Needy, Not the Greedy, in the Youth Program. I've spoke many, many times here. I know Reverend Burgess. He was my pastor at one time, and the council has done a fantastic job. My brother got murdered in 1994, shot in the back, cold-blooded murder. But we don't fight violence with violence. We fight violence with faith, wisdom, and love, and the Holy Spirit. I go into the schools, and I came out with these shirts that says, "Get on board with love. All lives matter to do the right thing. Black lives matter to do the right thing. White lives matter to do the right thing. Chinese lives matter to do the right thing. All lives matter to do the right thing," and that's what we stand for. We went to Leamington School District, up in Leamington, gave all these kids shirts and stuff like that not too long ago. All lives matter to do the right. Gave out bicycles and stuff. I've been doing this for 50 years out of my own pocket. I spent over a million dollars of my own money. Never had a grant. All these people know, we got books here, says, "Be the Change." Kids are saying, "Be the Change." And it starts with us. We got council members. We want to go into those schools in Pittsburgh and everything like that and tell them, "Be the Change. Get on board with love and kindness." That's what it's all about. We just added a fair Leechburg High School. All of them. Be the Change. Get on board. Gave them all these shirts and bicycles and stuff. It's not the shirts and the bicycles. It's the message. I was the dean of students in New Kansas City School District for 35 years, handled all the discipline. I've raised over 300 kids in the juvenile system, white, black. Environment changes people, and that's what you guys do. We all want you guys to come into the schools with us and be the change, and start with that. We love kids. It starts with love and kindness for all of us. We're all in this together. We support police officers. We had police officers up there in Leamington School handing out T-shirts that says, "Firemen." Judges. Reverend Burgess has been through some of our fare. We had a big thing over at Zone 28 for all the nurses, all the people in the hospitals, all free. We did it out of our own pockets. Reverend Burgess was there. The council was there. I gave you guys a book like this that said, "Be the Change." There's pictures in here with all of you in it, and I know that you guys will do a fantastic job. We're having a big thing at Valley High School on next Saturday from 2:30 to 5:30, praying for all the council, all the kids, all the police officers, all the families. We had a big thing for the police officer that got killed in the Churn Heights. I knew him personally. It was in the news, all free. We did it out of our own pocket to thank those families, thank those police officers, thank those firemen, thank people like yourself for all the good things that you do. So I would like you guys to show up.
Thank you.
I love you guys and support us.
Thank you.
Let's go into the schools.
Your time's expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good day. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to the next order of business, which is typically the presentation of papers, but I do want to take a moment. Councilman Coghill, did you want to mention?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes.
Move the silence.
I got the unfortunate news that our first female-serving...
Assistant chief.
Assistant chief. Thank you, Councilman Kraus. Teresa Rocco had passed away. She and I got quite close. She's a very good friend of mine. We've had so many great talks. This woman never stopped, even after she retired, in trying to close cases of missing children. You know, she went on to be an author. I read her book. It's fascinating. I recommend it to anybody, but I just wanted to acknowledge her passing, if we could, please.
Thank you. Can we have a... Councilman Kraus?
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I read that this morning, too, you know, with a heavy heart. I had the honor to meet her many, many years ago. I think when I... Right before I came in or when I first came onto the council, and I just found her to be one of the most amazing human beings that I'd ever have the honor to know. And she passed at 97. Lived a very, very long, rich, rewarding, and fulfilling life, and she will definitely be missed. There was a piece put out by the chief this morning to recognize her passing, and I think it's only appropriate that we recognize it as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a moment of silence, please? And one other thing we didn't get before we started papers is we didn't get our photo with all you, with your proclamations. So can we do that real quick? Members, please come forward. Come on, come forward. And anybody here that wants to? I see Jim Shepherd's in the back. He came specifically for Councilman Kraus. Do you want to come forward for the photo? Clerk's office and Sergeant at Arms, come forward. Okay. Thank you all.
Do you know who those are?
Well, these are from my CDBG fund.
Then they're all...
They're all, okay. Okay. Thank you. Just want to make sure. Okay, and now we'll move on to our presentation of papers, and we'll begin with Councilman Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess, real quick. No new papers?
No new papers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness?
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
May I use your mailers?
Thank you, Councilman.
Yes.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilwoman.
We met in...
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2300, Resolution Amending Resolution 500 of 2023, which reappropriated federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Version 6.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, you have a motion? Councilwoman Gross, you have a motion to waive the rules?
Thank you. I was sidebarring with our outgoing councilperson, and I missed my cue. Appreciate it. Motion to waive Rule 8 so that Bill... Which one is mine? 2300 can appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam President.
And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2313, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2021 Capitol Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by decreasing complete streets by $69,407.05 and increasing complete streets by $69,407.05.
Motion to waive the rules of council so that Bill 2313 appears on tomorrow's agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2302, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into startup participation agreements with selected entities as part of the cohorts of the PGH Lab and further authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into program participation agreements with local municipal entities to allow such entities to test products and services through PGH Lab at a cost not to exceed $100,000 over one year.
Motion to waive Rule 8, please, so this can appear on Wednesday's Standing Committee agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you. And I have to see what else is here. Councilman Wilson? Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development?
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2299, Resolution Amending Resolution 523 of 2023, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments There Too with Medical Debt Resolution, Inc., Doing Business as R.I.P. Medical Debt for Services Relating to the Purchasing and Retiring of Medical Debt for Certain City of Pittsburgh Residents for Some Not to Exceed $1 Million by Updating the Funding Sources."
Councilman Wilson?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rule so this appears on the standing committee agenda tomorrow.
Second. End.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. And myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy, I have three resolutions.
I know that.
And one communication... Yeah. Want to do the two communications first?
Madam President, you have bills, too.
Yeah, I'm like, I can't believe it. Okay.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 2303, Communication for Mayor Ed Ganey Submitting a Notice of Changes to Regulations Governing the Service Workers' Prevailing Wage Ordinance, dated December 5, 2023. And Bill Number 2304, Communication for Mayor Ed Ganey Submitting a Notice of Change to Policy Guidelines Governing Paid Sick Days Act, dated December 5, 2023.
Forgive me. Is it a motion to read, receive, and file?
Can we have a motion to read, receive, and file, please?
So moved, Madam President.
Sorry. In a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the next... Can you just give me one second, please? I'm having a conversation with our budget director.
Madam Clerk, do we read both communications?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with me as I go through all this. Madam Clerk, could you read the others?
Yes. Council President Kelsmith also presents Bill Number 2305, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, effective January 1, 2017, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2017 capital budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by reducing St. Andrews Lutheran Church by $3,750 and increasing Pittsburgh Musical Theater by $3,750 in authorized subsequent agreements. Bill 2306, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 864 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2019 capital budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing the Light of Kimberly by $5,000 and increasing Pittsburgh Musical Theater by $5,000 in authorized subsequent agreements. Bill 2312, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Facilities Improvements (Sports Facilities) by $260,000, Increasing Facilities Improvements (City Facilities) by $200,000, Increasing Play Area Improvements by $240,000, Increasing Park Reconstruction by $97,998.50, Increasing Street Resurfacing by $100,000, and Increasing City Council's Public Service Grants by $100,000 to be funded by a $997,998.50 transfer from the council as a body operating budget. And Bill Number 2314, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 723, effective December 27, 2022, as amended and titled, adopting and approving the 2023 capital budget and the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program and approving the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by increasing facilities improvements (city facilities) by $13,500 to be funded by a $13,500 transfer from the council as a body operating budget."
Thank you. Can I have a motion to waive the rules of council for Bill 2305, 2306, 2312, 2314?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bills appear on tomorrow's standing committee's agenda. Thank you. And I do want to point out, Councilwoman Warwick, you introduced a bill last week. We asked for information. Did you get that information? Of the recipients? Okay. Could you make sure you share that with councilmembers, too?
Yeah. So we'll talk about that. So we didn't introduce it last week.
Right. We held it because they didn't give us the list of recipients.
That's the one that I waived delay just now.
Okay.
But I want to make... We have the recipients now.
We have their name. Okay. I just want to make sure councilmember knows. Councilmembers know who they're voting for.
Yeah, I'll...
You'll bring it tomorrow? Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. And that takes us on to our next... Our reports to committee for final action. And we'll start with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2292, reported to Committee on Finance and Law for December 6, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2220, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2023 capital budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program so as to fund the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank at $200,000 and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreement. Bill 2221, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Mobility and Infrastructure to accept a donation from Michael Baker International in the amount of $10,000 to support the City of Pittsburgh's Safe Roots to School Program.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? I'm just going to add that, you know, the food bank is doing so much for the city of Pittsburgh, and I want to thank them for their work that they do in the city. But someone had just contacted Ricky Moody, you know, for mental health services and some other things. And one of the things they were talking about is how many kids are not getting food across the city of Pittsburgh. So I want to say the Food Justice Program and Fund better step it up and make sure that we're not getting these kinds of reports and these kinds of requests. We're putting $3 million into that. Um, Councilwoman, I have the floor. And so we have $3 million into that, and what we need to do now is see some results for that funding. And that... And the food pantry... The food bank does a lot in supplying our food pantries, and they do a lot to make sure that the kids are being fed, but they are... We are not getting meals every day for our kids in lots of areas, and I'll be glad to bring them down to talk about it. Some of the families. Anything else from members? Do you want to say something?
No, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. With that said, now move on to the reports... I'm sorry. Final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye. When the name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2293, reported to Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for December 6, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2175, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Public Safety Supply, Inc., for the provision of uniforms, duty equipment, and related tailoring and embroidering services for the Department of Public Safety for a five-year term. Bill 2185, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article V Special Funds Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund 237.02, Establishment of the Stop the Violence Fund by establishing a maximum annual dollar amount allocation to the fund and amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article V Special Funds Chapter 237 Stop the Violence Fund 237.03, Uses and Restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund by changing the annual percentage budgeted for outside community-based, non-governmental organizations and establishing a maximum annual percentage to be allocated to the Department of Parks and Recreation.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President?
Yes. Councilman.
Before members is an amendment to Bill 2175. And last week, there was discussion that members didn't feel comfortable voting on the uniforms contract without knowing the amounts being expended. And so the amendment is to attach the amounts being expended to the actual bill itself. And Councilman Kraus just pointed out that the numbers for 2024 are the actual expenditure amounts. But given that we have to present a five-year budget, we made the assumption that these will be about the same amounts for all the outer years. Certainly, when we budget next year, those dollars will more likely change, but we had to make an assumption. That's... Which is why the numbers are the same for the outer years.
Did you make a motion?
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Madam President? Thank you. I just wanted to thank Councilman Lavelle because we talked about trying to get, for transparency for the public and for councilmembers, what the total amount of the contract would be, and he was able to work with the budget office to get those numbers. So I really appreciate that work. So council, you know, for the public, you can now go into Legislature and see kind of what is the amount of the contract that we are voting on. So thank you, Councilman.
Madam President, may I?
Thank you. Yes, Councilman.
Uh, thank you. So my comments are on Bill 2185. We're not on that?
No. I'm just going to suggest, before we move on to your comments, we vote on the amendment.
Of course. Yep. Okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
Councilman Kraus wants to address a different bill, so I was just asking that we vote the amendment first before moving on.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's amended. Councilman?
Yeah. No, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Madam President. The... So my comments are, as it relates to the Stop the Violence Fund. I'm going to vote this today. I want to start by leading my comments with that. Councilman Lavelle and I have had, maybe not extensive conversations, but we've had conversation. I applaud the spirit of the bill and what the councilman is attempting to accomplish by putting the bill forward, and that is why I'm voting for the bill this morning. I still have my reservations about the amount that we've capped the bill at, but it is clearly the will of the body to see it move... The bill move forward with that amount. I'm certainly not going to resist it. But more importantly, I just wanted to congratulate the councilman on what he accomplished through the spirit of the bill, and I do believe that the work of the Stop the Violence Fund will be greatly enriched by what is being put forward with this bill, and that's why I'm voting for it.
Thank you, Councilman. And I'm just going to add... Anything else from members? I'm just going to add, I want to thank Councilman Lavelle for putting this forward, but I do want to say, again, we are struggling every day to pay our bills in the city of Pittsburgh. Right now, I had to pull a project from Councilman Warwick's district, which we're trying to find additional funding because our elevators need fixed at $1,000,000.5. And yet, we're giving money hand over fist to grant money and people that we're not necessarily holding accountable the way that we should. And we're trying, but it's just not always so easy. So I just want to say, for me, I'll vote for this because we're capping it, but I think it's a conversation we're going to have over the next few weeks on what we do with Stop the Violence, whether we stop it totally and we try to do something different, and whether we try to get private dollars in here, which is something our solicitor has been advocating for and offering to help with. So I think those are the conversations we have to have. We cannot continue to hand money out when we don't have the money to do the things that we are responsible to do. But I'll vote today for the cap. With that said, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye. When the name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms... Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. That moves us to Councilman Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructures.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2294, reported to Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for December 6, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2214, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a supplemental agreement or agreements with C.D.R. Maguire, Inc., for project design management services and reviews in connection with various city of Pittsburgh projects to add funding for the preliminary engineering and final design phases, increasing the total not to exceed to $3,610,896.63, an increase of $119,019.04, reimbursable at either 100% or 95%, depending on a specific project. Bill 2215, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with A. Liberoni, Inc., for costs associated with construction for the Sylvan Avenue Multimodal Path Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $1,645,770.37, of which $1,77,744.25 is reimbursable. Bill 2216, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the construction phase of the Sylvan Avenue Multimodal Path Project, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $1,532,585, an increase of $532,585 from the previously executed agreement. Bill 2217, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Michael Baker International, Inc., for costs associated with the preliminary design phase for the Penn Avenue Signals Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $766,365.62, reimbursable at 80%. Bill 2218, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design of the Penn Avenue Signal Improvements Project, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $983,660, an increase of $230,000 from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at 80%. And Bill 2219, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with MS Consultants, Inc., for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase for the California Avenue Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $847,398.45, reimbursable at 100%.
Councilman Kraus?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. On Bill 2219, members have before them an amendment by substitution. It is technical in nature. It just adjusts the dollar amount that we are expending at 100% reimbursable dollars from $847,398 to $844,796. So offer that up as an amendment.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill's amended. And now, uh, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2295, reported a committee on land use and economic development for December 6, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2000, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances, that certain structure known as Ella and Emil Keller House, located at 201 North Mertland Street in North Point Breeze in the 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property support, supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city. And Bill Number 2084, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with various community-based organizations for the implementation of the 2023 Neighborhood Economic Development Program and to provide for the payment of the costs thereof at a cost not to exceed $500,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? I wanna thank Councilman Wilson for holding and doing his due diligence, trying to make sure that we were doing the right things with these bills. And, um, our budget director offered some advice, and so I thank you for following that. But I do wanna say that I do have some concerns because you have some groups that were not funded. I have no groups in District Two funded. And, I mean, it just speaks volumes about where we are. So, thank you very much. But thank you for doing your due diligence and trying to make sure everybody was represented. But that said, the bills are now ready for final passage, or final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
No. Well, no on Bill, I apologize.
Eighty-four.
Bill, uh, 2084, and yes on 2000.
Nine ayes, zero nos on Bill 2000, and eight ayes, one no on Bill 2084.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And we'll move on to our next committee of the day, which is Councilwoman Erica Strasburger Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Madam President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2296, reported a committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for December 6, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2229, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Department of Human Services, OCR, Key Service Corp. with regard to the 2023 AmeriCorps Summer Program in an amount not to exceed $15,936. This payment is match funding for AmeriCorps members who worked with the Department of Parks and Recreation during the 2023 Summer Program.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Bills, I apologize. There's one bill. Seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And, uh, that takes us on to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2297, reported a committee on performance and asset management for December 6, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2222, resolution, amending resolution 831 of 2021, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Core Business Technologies for software, equipment, and services related to payment processing and a cash sharing system for the Department of Finance in order to add services for the Bureau of Police by increasing the approved amount by $62,615 for an amended total cost not to exceed $297,101.60 over three years. Bill 2224, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Appalachian Regional Commission and Connect Humanities Appalachian Digital Accelerator Program for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in an amount of $30,000 to support a digital equity position in IMP. A local match of $20,000 shall come from the Innovation and Performance Operating Budget for a total project cost of $50,000. Bill 2225, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Atlantis IT Consulting Group, LLC, as needed for an enterprise-wide warehouse supply and inventory management solution at a cost not to exceed $230,000 over one year. Bill 2226, resolution amending resolution 719 of 2022, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an amended agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Cohen Law Group and CTC Technology and Energy for renegotiation of the city's cable franchise agreements with Comcast and Verizon and for consultation on development of fiber and wireless telecommunication, telecommunication assets and policy by increasing the approved amount by $60,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $651,213.70 over four years. Bill 2227, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the office of the mayor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Encapsulate to upgrade the city's customer relationship management CRM system and our related capabilities and processes at a cost not to exceed $510,000 over one year, subject to appropriation by City Council and future budgets. Bill 2228, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with the Wilson Group for the lease of multi-function devices and managed print services to include MFDs, our related hardware, integrated and standalone, support and maintenance, and supply software-related services and solutions at a cost not to exceed $1,600,000 over four years. Bill 2270, resolution authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of Innovation and Performance, Parks, and Recreation and Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with the Rec Desk, LLC, to provide permitting and scheduling enterprise software at a cost not to exceed $24,500 over one year. And Bill 2284, resolution amending resolution 758 of 2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Departments of Innovation and Performance, Public Safety, and Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with EDOC's Technologies, LLC, for licensing services and maintenance and support services to provide document management services to include Department of Mobility and Infrastructure documents by increasing the approved amount by $42,190 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,604,096.83 over a period not to exceed 11 years.
Uh, I'll tell you one second. Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, so I have a, a motion to amend 2284, just a technical amendment and clarification at the request of Councilwoman Gross. We, uh, added the expiration date. And just a little bit of clarification about what the software does.
Okay.
So.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Discussion? Do you wanna say anything else?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, no.
That was it? Okay. Okay. Um, oh, and, I'm sorry. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill's amended. Now, uh, final action on, on the bills, all the bills. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discuss, any further discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye. Uh, aye on all bills except for 2284, no on Bill 2284.
Nine ayes, zero nos on Bills 2222, 2224, 2225, 2226, 2227, 2228, and 2220, I'm sorry, 2270. And eight ayes, one no on Bill 2284.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2298, reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for December 6, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2205, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for Allegheny City Brewing, located at East Ohio Street in Emblem Alley, at no cost to the city. Bill 2206, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 10th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 50K, Lot 257, Council District 9, at no cost to the city. Bill 2207, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 10th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 50G, Lots 45, 46, 53, 55, 112, and 128, Council District 9, at no cost to the city. Bill 2208, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 11th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 50M, Lot 167, in Council District 9, no cost to the city. Bill 2209, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 30th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 14R, Lots 230 and 238, Council District 3, at no cost to the city. Bill 2210, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 22nd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 23L, Lot 101, Council District 1, at no cost to the city. Bill 2211, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 22nd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 23K, Lots 298, 299, and 300, Council District 1, no cost to the city. Bill 2212, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 18th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 15R, Lots 230 and 281, and Block 15H, Lot 291, Council District 3, at no cost to the city. And Bill 2213, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 5th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 10C, Lot 26, Block 27B, Lots 392 and 393, and Block 26P, Lots 156, 157, and 164, Council District 6, at no cost to the city.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please, call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. But I do have, um, Councilwoman Warwick. As small games of chance? Councilwoman? Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill 2307. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the Pittsburgh Jewish Chronicle to be a civic and/or service organization within the context of the Pennsylvania Small Games of Chance Act as amended.
Thank you. Um.
Motion to approve?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill's approved. But, um, that moves us on to... I'm sorry. The meeting announcements. Immediately following this meeting, council will hold, well, not immediately, we're gonna have a little reception, and then immedi, and then after the reception, council will have, hold our, our line item vote on the 2024 budget. Tomorrow, Wednesday, December 13th, at 9:30 a.m., council will hold a pre-agenda interview on Bill 2023, 2035, appointing Michelle Miller Beener to the Commission on Infrastructure, Asset Reporting, and Investment. Also, on Wednesday, council's standing committees meeting will hold, will be held at 10 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9 a.m. Wednesday morning. And on Wednesday, at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cable cast public hearing on the, on bills, on the Bill 2023, 2133, authorizing the naming an unnamed pavilion in the West End Park to the Stephen something Pavilion. Speaker registration will close at noon on Wednesday. On Thursday, December 14th, council will hold a cable cast public hearing at 10 a.m. on the mayor, on Mayor Ed Guiney's proposed 2024 operating and capital budgets. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out a sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Registration, speaker registration will close at 8:30 a.m. on Thursday morning. Is there anything from members? Councilman Lavelle?
Thank you. Just for clarity, um, 'cause I know we're gonna do the line item vote after the reception. But just for members to, so that we're all in the same accord, do we just wanna say 1:30?
About around 1:30. Okay. Thank you. That's actually what.
1:45.
Thank you. 1:45. Okay. I'm sorry. Does that work, Madam Clerk? Okay. I just wanna make sure. Okay, thank you.
Because you know it's gonna be one.
And then, um... I need to call for an executive session. What does it, have we called again? Update on the DA's review of the procurement process. Uh, so I need a motion to...
The move.
For that in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna, can we schedule that immediately?
Yeah, you can do it today after the budget line item.
We can do it after line item vote today if we have time for that. But it has to be soon. I can tell you that. Um, so I'll send something, Madam Clerk will send something out shortly. And I also wanna offer our condolences to Deputy Director Rhea Price. Her grandmother, who was very much like a mother to her, has also passed away. And it passed, she passed away during budget season, and Rhea still kept coming in and doing work to make sure that she was helping us through this process. So I wanna offer our condolences to Rhea Price. That said, can I have a motion? If there's no absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
The move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.